We'll call tonight's council meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson. Christensen.
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Docan.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Do we have any additions or additions to the agenda? Councilman Doc.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At some point, I'd like to just make a couple of quick comments about the Wilmer Curling Club banquet that I was invited to and if I could at some point.
Should we put that under miscellaneous at the end of the meeting?
That's fine.
We'll move into the consent items if there are any.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll move right into the scheduled hearing and I will open that hearing for the proposed tax abatement for the Torgerson properties. Is there anyone here to speak to that? Bruce?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council. As per past discussions before the council, you'll simply note that the city did receive a formal request from Torgerson Properties for tax abatement related to the remodeling and expansion of the Motel Conference Center properties on East Highway 12. The city has been in discussion with Torgerson Properties regarding the project, what it will create in the way of tax base, employment, and ancillary benefit to the community. The physical plans for the project have been to the planning commission and were unanimously approved. However, bids did come in substantially over budget thereby prompting the request for the abatement. We've made estimates of the abatement and those are included in your council packet. Being proposed by staff is a decreasing percentage as we've done on past projects and we've proposed providing 100 percent of the estimated value for the first five years, 75 percent for years six, seven, and eight, and then a 50 percent abatement for the increased value for the last two years of the 10-year abatement. The economic benefit from this project comes in the form of increased employment and will be a business subsidy goal in the business subsidy agreement. The employment is listed as a goal of the project. They are projecting 25 additional full-time equivalent jobs and that would be added to the 78 FTEs that they currently have. You have at your site also a handout that discusses the value of the conference center and also discusses convention and visitor impact to the community. If you look at the attachment, you'll note that the fiscal impact to the city is estimated at an average of just under $19,000 per year for a 10-year period. The city and other taxing jurisdictions will continue to receive the taxes being paid on the current value. That's important to note. The alternatives to this project or to the abatement are to negotiate a lesser amount, negotiate a lesser term, or to not provide any tax abatement at all. It's the recommendation of staff that the council approve the resolution that authorizes a mayor and administrator to execute a tax abatement business subsidy agreement in substantial conformance to the draft agreement that went out in your Friday mailing. And with that, I will let the staff recommendation stand. I know Steve Rehnquist from the Economic Development Commission is here this evening also to address this subject. I'll defer to Steve.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. And yes, Frank, I'll be brief. You won't have to remind me. Thank you. I support the tax abatement tonight mostly because I support Can Do High County and the city of Wilmer. And using business subsidies as a tool give us some very, four very important functions. One, it helps us level the playing field with other communities. I could tell you that probably Wilmer does less than half of the tax abatement of other cities our size and certainly far less than the larger cities. And I can also tell you we compete with the St. Clouds and the Mankatos and the Rochester's more than we do the MontaVIDios and the Litchfields and the Benson's of the world. Not that we don't compete, but the growing and expanding Wilmer competes with cities that are larger than us and if we're going to take our rightful place, we need to level that playing field. It gives us a competitive advantage and the ability to expand when used. It encourages businesses to do their expansion today and involves the public in at least one and usually two different opportunity to speak at a public meeting. So what this does is encourages public participation. So I would encourage the city council to consider tax abatement as, I might imagine, just as I'm sure many of you did and maybe probably members of our listening audience or viewing audience, members here at the council meeting tonight, as we've looked for opportunities for public comments from around the nation. If I would ask you as a rule what was one of the most conservative states in America, I'll bet you Arizona as a rule would be in the top five states and almost anybody would mention. I'm looking at an article here from Tucson talking about how they recommend tax abatement, how it gives them the ability to compete, how it recognizes local developers, people that have already made a commitment to their local area, and how it helps their city grow in competition with the other cities. I would be happy, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, to supply that, Doc, and I'll bring it, in fact, I'll bring it over to City Hall tomorrow and then Charlene can ask the mayor or others if they'd like that distributed. I'm looking at information from the city of Des Moines and in Des Moines, they're even talking about personal property tax abatement. You know, Minnesota at one time, if you did improvements on your homes, they were exempt from new taxes based on that, and that wasn't that long ago, on improvements on your homes. That's a form of tax abatement. I'm looking at Indiana, another reasonably conservative state, and they're talking about their use of abatement. New Orleans, I can go on and on, but what it really amounts to is around this country. In Indiana, they talked about having 92 counties. We have 87 in Minnesota. And they talked about 85 of those 92 counties were using tax abatement just this last year. So you can see in other states how this is a commonly used in development tool. I think sometimes around the state of Minnesota, we get into, well, how deep the pockets are of somebody that proposes a project. And you may remember, we shouldn't help the Twins build the stadium because the poll ads had deep pockets or that type of a thing. I could tell you that in order to do any project, if you're going to do $11 million project, you need to start with pretty deep pockets to start with. Not just anybody can put projects together of this nature. If you're looking at converting a State of Minnesota Regional Treatment Center, a mental health campus, to a privately financed technology campus, nowhere else in the state has anybody been able to do this. You have to have the capacity to spend already $13 million on their way to $25 million. Now who among us can do that? And we gave tax abatement to that project, you might remember. We gave Job Z to that project. So if we want our city and our county to be competitive, we need to be able to use tax abatement and other forms of business subsidy. So I'll sit down now, but I want it to be, this isn't a vote of the Economic Development Commission. This is merely their executive director's opinion and advice to you, my city council members in Wilmer, that I think this is a good project, it's a valuable project, it's going to create new jobs, it'll inspire quite, you know, we talk about tourism as being one of those sources of income that often goes overlooked in some counties. This will inspire new tourism dollars and this will be good for Wilmer and I recommend highly that you consider it. Thank you very much.
Don't run away. There may be some questions. Are there some questions from the audience? Thank you.
If you would come up to the mic, please. No, that's all right. This is a public hearing. Anyone may speak. You just need to come and give your name and...
In St. Cloud and, or, good evening, councilmembers and mayor and staff. Like St. Cloud, is that a city-owned convention center?
I must admit, Ken, I don't know for sure if it is or not.
I had a conversation this morning with some retired city staff. It wasn't Mick. And St. Cloud, Rochester, and maybe Duluth are all city-owned convention centers. But that, I'm not sure.
I believe that is correct.
The only response I would have to that, and I believe Ken is probably right, and I know up in Minneapolis, but that's a far different situation, they've supported their convention center, is by having the private sector provide a convention center, it eliminates the need for the city to get into the direct year-to-year operation of that facility. And I'm not opposed to the cities that do. We have another facility on a different fringe of the city that obviously the government is involved in. But this particular facility, other than the request for some abatement, and as Bruce pointed out, that's on new growth. Present level of tax dollars will go to the three taxing jurisdictions. I think this is a worthy project and I think it behooves the city to encourage the private sector to step forward and do these projects whenever they can and whenever they will.
Are there any further questions for Steve? Hearing done and we'll close the public hearing and open the...
No, no, no. Other people want to speak.
Did you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, please, please do.
My name is Jerry Gash. I live at 1200 Southeast Wilmer Avenue. Mr. Mayor, city councilmembers, staff. As a regional economic center that did not have a downturn over the past four years, we should be proud of our local political and business leadership. As a community, we have hosted many events in our city to wide acclaim year-round for many years. The civic center has been a growing, a steady and growing attraction that is busy year-round. This building was built and funded with tax dollars. Our city does not have a tax-funded conference center. The Holiday Inn provides this service for the most part to our community and it draws on its own a lot of business and dollars to the community of Wilmer. I do believe the tax abatement that they are asking for is very reasonable and not a cost to the city, to the taxpayers of Wilmer, but an investment. I trust them for having faith in the future success of Wilmer. This past week, I was contacted by a national real estate broker. He was interested in listing our commercial property, our commercial property that we own. In our conversation, I was telling him the benefits of Wilmer. He said, "Oh, I know about Wilmer. That's why I'm calling you." We're known here for being a progressive and successful city. This abatement is one way we can encourage growth in our city and when you look at the big picture for our future, this here is just a bump in the road, this abatement, you know. It's not a big bump. It's helpful and a suggestion to more businesses coming into this community, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Did you want to speak? Please do. Can you identify yourself and where you're from?
Yes. I'm Kimberly Peterson. Excuse me, I'm very short. And I work with Torgerson Properties. I've been with them for about eight years now. I'm at the front desk of the Holiday Inn, Comfort Inn, Days Inn, and Country Inn and Suites of Wilmer. I've seen and heard everything that is being said, but I'd like to tell you my side of the story. My side is every phone call I get for the hotels, the convention center, and the Green Mill of Wilmer. You do not understand all the phone calls I get of people who are not from here. They would like a hotel that is up to date, that has two to three stories with an elevator. They would also like breakfast. The Holiday Inn is a Holiday Inn that is not with a breakfast because Green Mill is part of it. They would like a Holiday Inn Express, which is a total breakfast that is reasonable and comfortable. I have seen the letters in the newspaper and they've said that we are losing 30 jobs. May I say, we are not. I'm part of that. I started as a front desk person at the Holiday Inn, part-time, seven years ago. I've been with them for all this time. They have given me the opportunity to be an assistant general manager, which I have declined about two years ago because I have family. They've continued my employment. They have given me the chance to continue for four hotels. I'm at all four hotels. And may I say, people who, you may not see all the people I see, but there are people through this whole state and may I say, this whole country and other countries too. We provide for Wilmer poultry and we provide for all the turkey's and everything that's around here. It's a big project, I know, but I believe it needs to be done. You don't answer the phone calls I get. I get phone calls, "Well, how old is your carpet? What type of breakfast do you have? Will I have this? Will I have that?" We need to compete with all the cities around here. And I'm not just talking about the big Twin Cities, which we get phone calls. Well, I get the $79 rate at the Twin Cities. We're not the Twin Cities. We are Wilmer, Minnesota. We have a huge project ahead of us and we need to do it. Because not for us, but for everybody around here, all of us. People who stay at the Holiday Inn, Country Inn, Days Inn, or Country Inn and Suites, they don't just stay at a hotel. They have breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Where else do you think they're going to go? They're going to go to Green Mill, which is our sister property, which I'm proud of. They're going to go to Perkins. They're going to the 19th, to the golf course. They're going to all the other restaurants, even Burger King or McDonald's. We are here as a town and we are here to support each other. I grew up in this town and I grew up with a business. My dad had Crown Floral and I'm very proud of that. And I'm proud of Wilmer and we need to do this. It's not a choice. Torgerson's have been good friends whenever I was a very little girl. Sue and Tom were good to me and my family. And now I'm an adult with my own kids and Torgerson's are here for me. They need this tax abatement. We have to do this. We have to do this for the town of Wilmer. It's not a choice. If you don't agree to this, then you're losing out. Not just for the taxes that you may lose or the jobs you may lose. It's not a choice. We have to do this. We have to compete with St. Cloud. We have to compete with Alexandria. We have to compete with Marshall and we have to compete with the Twin Cities. And I see this on a daily basis. I answer every single phone call of the Holiday Inn, which gets every single phone call for sales directing to marketing and to Green Mill for their food. I've seen meetings that have five people that are not from Wilmer and I've seen conventions that are 2,000 to 3,000 people in our beautiful city. And they need to come here. And they need this. I know people are saying we're losing jobs. I've not lost my job. Like I said, I'm a floater for all the hotels and I've been given that beautiful chance. And I worked with people who are very good friends of mine, a Comfort Inn, which is closing in less than a week. They are not losing their jobs. Maintenance, housekeeping and front desk are not losing their jobs. Dave Weiss, the general manager of our campus, Comfort Inn, Days Inn, and Holiday Inn, he's made sure we're not losing our jobs and I can vouch for every single person who's there. There are three other hotels, Torgerson Properties. Let's say this, Torgerson has the whole group here in Wilmer. We're the ones controlling it all. We can give you a hotel that has a waterslide and the best of breakfast at Country Inn and Suites. And if you want a cheap hotel, the best Days Inn with a good breakfast, but it doesn't have the amenities, but it's there. And we have it all. And Torgerson's has made it possible. And Torgerson's made it possible for me to keep my job and everybody who's leaving Comfort Inn, which is closing in less than a week. They're not losing their jobs. We may lose about a day, which is eight hours, that's it, in the next six to nine months. We're not losing anything. We're gaining. And this is it. I'm sorry, but you have to accept this. And this is from my heart, as a businesswoman, as a Wilmerite. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments or questions? If not, I will close the public hearing and, did you have a comment? Sure, go right in.
Mayor and council, my name is Tom Torgerson. I'm with Torgerson Properties and I reside in Spacer, Minnesota. Thank you for the opportunity here tonight to perhaps provide some information, answer some questions that are kind of hanging out there. I'll say to you that our request was something that wasn't initially on our radar, wasn't the initial plan of ours. We've been gearing up for this project for a couple of years and it's certainly by far within our company, the largest, we call these property repositions, property repositionings. The, it's the largest one that we've ever undertaken in our history. And part of that is because this property dates back to 42 years of age. It's the oldest property that we own. It's our first property in our company in the hospitality industry. It also is because we've, I think that Kimberly kind of said it, we created this animal, this big behemoth here in the community of Wilmer and Can Do High County. And it's not by accident. It's really because this is where roots are. I'm third-generation family business here and my grandfather started a haberdashery just on the street here, right on the street in the 30s. I'm third generation. I live here, our company base is out of here and to a great extent out of pride, what we have here in this community has evolved and it's a type of diversified business that we don't have anywhere else in our company. And a big part of that is the Wilmer Conference Center. The Wilmer Conference Center is a 20,000-square-foot building and it's a refined building. It's not a civic center. It's not an athletic facility. It's a refined meeting and conference center type of a complex. Itself, in and of its own four walls and its business operation, is not profitable. It does not make money. And, you know, are you going to believe me in that? Maybe not, but I can tell you that common sense can kind of answer that question and validate it. If you look around the entire state of Minnesota, there is not a community in outstate, if you disregard the metropolitan area. There is not a community in the entire state of Minnesota that has a conference center, refined conference center, this magnitude that is not subsidized, primarily owned by the public is generally the case. You'll find it at the Indian Gaming Casinos, which is sponsored by the casinos. They support the loss endeavor of the conference center, but you don't find it born, the cost of the operation borne by business, private sector. So it really is unique and 25 years ago is when the conference center was built, give or take. And we worked together at that time to get it done. It was something that was a high priority on the Development Commission at that time to have occur in this community. And we did get it done. It's 25 years later and it needs to reinvent itself. It really does. It's competing right now, but I'll tell you that you get to that point, it's no different than the Metrodome on a much grander scale or what have you, you cross that corner, the bell curve, and you pretty soon you lose your competitiveness. Now, I know that you'd say, "Well, do you have the capability of entirely funding this yourself?" And yes, we do. And yes, we are. But we are asking for some relief in exchange for that. And that's the tax abatement. I started out by saying that it wasn't our original plan to come before you and make this request. The project, we would like to keep intact. We would propose to you, it's in best interest to the community that we keep it, the scope intact as we have it. But we can start picking the project apart. There's no question we can. That's, it's, that can easily be done. I think when you do it, the benefit, the benefit to the community at large kind of loses itself. It really loses its punch. It's, if you get 80 percent of the way there, you get 82 and a half percent of the way there, it just isn't quite the same as getting 100 percent of the way there. What we're proposing to do is go forward with the overall project and get 100 percent of the way there. And it's a project that grew from what we thought would be about an $8 million project and now is pushing north at 12 million to keep it all intact. About a million five of that is improvements to the Wilmer Conference Center and the rest of it is improvements to the hotels and restaurants. I could say that the, to evaluate the value, to put a quantitative measure to the value of what the conference center combined with the cottage businesses of the hotels and restaurants mean to the community, it is really hard to get quantitative. And yes, you can look at it from a jobs perspective and jobs are important, critically important. But I would suggest to you that the real grand value that this overall complex and with the improved conference center really brings to this community in this county is in terms of exposure. It's exposing people to this area... It's exposing people to this area that don't live in this area, that don't normally come to this area. It enhances the ability for people like Jenny O., you know, Wilmer Poultry, the people at the Midwest Campus, ACMC, Rice, Rice Care, big users of ours, you know, certainly the city has vested interest in them. But we enhance the ability for them to do business. We enhance the quality of life. This project has, and going forward with the improvements would continue to enhance the quality of life here in Kanduay County. If this Wilmer Conference Center didn't exist, and you were looking to replace it, I think that it would cost you in the neighborhood of $6 million upfront to do so. You'd probably say, well, let's put it on city-owned property out by the civic center and save a buck. And not have the support facilities that the current facility does, that the current conference center does have, which would significantly hamper its ability to be competitive against Jackpot Junction, against Granite Falls, against St. Cloud, against Mankato, against Amiji, who is in the process of city-owned and building a conference center right now, publicly-owned, community and county the size that we're in here. Not only would it not be positioned to compete, but it would cost the taxpayers up to $6 million right out of the gate. Then the ongoing operating costs, I would suggest to you, is probably in the $200,000 a year range to just keep the boat afloat. We're blessed, we don't have this situation here. There was reasons for that 25 years ago that got the conference center built, and it's here today. And what we're looking for, I kind of, I mumble a little bit because I'm not really a public speaker, so please, I apologize. But we in our company, all companies have cultures. And in our company, we have a culture that's founded upon what we call a win-win relationship. And it's easy to speak words, but when you walk the walk is what really counts. And we believe at all levels within our company, if the two parties to a transaction, to a relationship aren't winners, and it's viewed as one's a winner and one's a loser, both parties will end up losing. It's just a matter of how quickly you get to that point where everybody's a loser. I think by you supporting this project, it assures a win-win relationship. And I would even suggest to you that our request is, maybe it's even been said, is actually a pretty, almost a token. It is fairly small in the overall scale of the project that we're proposing. But nonetheless, it's financially meaningful to us, but it also sends a message to us also that's even probably more meaningful to that, that we are in this together. And we're ready as a community and a county to reinvent this conference center and launch it towards the next 20, 30 years of really being competitive and ahead of communities in our category in outstate Minnesota, something that they just don't have. Or if they do have it, as I said earlier, the entire cost is borne by the public taxpayer. Something perhaps to keep in mind, too, I love this community. I was born and raised here. I only left here for 13 years to do a stint down in southern Minnesota in Fairmont, but the rest of my 55 years have been living here in Kanduay County. I say that because there's a lot of great things about Kanduay County. There's enough great things for me to live here. For me to base my business out of Minneapolis would be much easier from a business standpoint. I live here because I want to. Wilmer is, what I define is a destination market for lodging. It's on the way to nowhere from any practical standpoint. It is not on an interstate highway. We in our company only have one other business that is similar to a market like we're in here in Wilmer, and that would be a new home. It's on the way to nowhere, and it's, it's not on an interstate highway. And from a hotel and lodging standpoint, that is really meaningful. Wilmer, our business here in Wilmer is generated, the vast majority is generated because people are destined to be here. They're going to come here and do business. They're going to interact with people that are here. There's an event that brings them here. Hopefully, the conference center oftentimes is hosting and has sold that event that is bringing them here. But it's a destination hospitality market. And with that, it doesn't have this steady kind of base business that all of our other markets other than one have, that's driven day in and day out by an interstate going on its doorstep, past its doorstep. And with that, I'll share with you some performance statistics. They're key measures in our business, and those are occupancies. You know, what kind of occupancy does your hotel operate at? And I can tell you that the industry operates, it fluctuates a point here and there. At its low, it's down at about 64% in the last 10 years, and its highs is about 67%. And that's kind of the range, that it's about 66% right now. I'll give you actual numbers of our occupancy here in this marketplace. In 2006, we did 53.02% occupancy. 2007, I'll forget the tenths and the hundreds here, but we did 55%. In 2008, we did 55%. 2009, we did 47%. 2010, we did 51%. 2011, rounding up, we did 56%. In 2012, we did exactly the same, 55.6%. It's not shooting the lights out kind of performance. We have been, as an asset manager, they call it in finance terms, with the fiduciary responsibility of the assets here, the hotels and the business enterprise, I would want to suggest that we've been conservative over a long period of time. We've paid down our debt, which allows us to operate at these levels, but it also allows us to financially do the scale of this project that we're proposing. We have secured $9 million of financing on this project locally. We had three institutions actually search us out, local institutions, wanting to finance this project when they caught wind of it. It's actually with Bremmer, but locally here. But $9 million of the funding is coming from Bremmer through a loan, first mortgage on the premise, personal guarantees of our company and myself personally. The balance of the money comes from our company. And that's somewhere we don't know yet, but it's somewhere around $3.5 million of equity that's going into this project in addition to the obligation to repay the loan. We are asking for this tax abatement, which I think two of the previous speakers did define it very well, but I think it, for the sake of repetitiveness, it's so important to understand that what's being proposed is that the assessed valuation on the greater property out there right now, what's being proposed is that stays in place. And the tax levy on that assessed valuation continues on over the period of time of the abatement. And in fact, as that levy would change, heaven forbid it goes up, but as that levy would change, it applies to that, the existing assessed valuation. So our taxes actually would go up. What we, the proposal that you have in front of you for consideration is the increased, is based on the increased in assessed valuation for property tax purposes that is generated as a result of the improvements to the project. So what they are is incremental taxes. They aren't taxes that are in the coffers of the county. They aren't taxes that are in the coffers of the city. These are incremental taxes. And what we have asked is that you allow us, we pay those increased taxes to you actually, twice annually, as everybody pays their property taxes. And if upon audit, we pass the tests that are being proposed in the agreement, that you and the county rebate that increased payment as a result of the increased improvements back to us for this period of 10 years. After that 10 years, the entire increase in taxation goes to the city and the county. That's what our request is. And the calculations were something like $19,000 a year from the city with a amortization to it that year seven, I think, and year six, and year eight. So, you know, what does it add up to? I don't know. It's, it's, it's $175,000, give or take. And that's what we're talking about here. And as I said, it's financially important to us, but more than anything, I think at this point, it sends a message to us that we're in this together as a win-win relationship. Maybe at this time, I'd offer up to you, if I have an answer to a question that you have regarding the project or our company, that I'm open for questions.
Okay, we do have it, the, thank you, Mr. Torgerson, by the way. We do have it open.
Public.
The public hearing is open at this point, if you decide that you want to ask questions. Charlie, did you have anything to add?
No, I mean, you need, it's appropriate to take any other further public comment before or question.
Do we have further public? Go ahead, Nancy.
My name is Nancy Strady. I guess the comment was made about my article in the paper, it was more of a comment to the letter of the editor. I have nothing against Torgerson Properties. I was a former employee and loved working for them. And I'm also looking at booking an event in 2015 that would bring 500 people there. So hopefully, that works out. But I have a problem with all tax abatements until this city council comes up with a policy concerning those tax abatements that cannot be undermined or by different interpretations of your staff. That's my problem with the tax abatement. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any further discussion? Hearing done, then I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion amongst the council. Do you have questions or comments for any of the speakers or Councilman Fegley?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the tax abatement agreement as proposed here.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the tax abatement as written, the, as written, I guess. And that is a motion?
Resolution.
Is this a resolution?
It is a resolution.
Yes.
A roll call.
Discussion.
Discussion. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start it off. Got kind of a head cold this evening, so forgive me. I've had several phone calls and emails, and people contact me personally, several in my ward, concerned about opening the doors, floodgates. Once we do this first one service, retail slash business, what's going to happen? Are we going to, we're going to get something from any restaurant that's going to remodel down the road? I mean, recently, we've had Mills, Applebee's, Burger King, McDonald's, Lululeans, a new ice cream store. They also affect the community with dollars, tourism dollars. A lot of people eat there when they come to town. They didn't ask for a tax abatement. Maybe they didn't know it was there. I don't know. But I'm giving the other side of the story. There's always two sides to every story. And they're concerned that, well, for instance, the county tomorrow is going to hear three tax abatements. One is the Holiday Inn upgrade, and there's two from Sunberg. Where do we stop? The city presently does not have a written policy for tax abatement. We're kind of using the tax incentives or the TIF program, they're ideals that we have to go by. I spent three hours on the internet yesterday and three hours today searching out tax abatements for remodeling restaurants, hotels across the United States. And I'm finding that most of them have to do with blighted areas or hotels that have been closed for several years. Somebody buys them for a dime on the dollar, and then the city wants to lift up that property and make it valuable for a tax base. I also find that most small cities in the state have a tax policy. The Waseek is the Wadena's, different counties, smaller counties. And they came to these policies because there was a request and they didn't know how to handle it. I feel uncomfortable voting on this without a policy. I know that Councilman Arman here has asked repeatedly since the Lakeland Hotel situation for a tax abatement policy, and we have not done anything about it, the council or staff. I do appreciate, you know, what you, the convention center, it does bring a lot of people here. However, I was made aware of recently that the convention center was also built with a tax increment financing project. I believe Mayor Ollie Reynolds was the mayor at the time, and he said, you're not going to build a hotel unless there's a convention center on there, and we'll give you tax increment financing. And I guess that's what happened. I heard that. We also have a CBV, Convention and Visitors Bureau, that collects dollars from all of the hotels in the county. And that money goes to promote tourism and conventions. And most of those dollars promote the convention center because that brings heads on beds. So we are doing something for the convention center. We're fully supporting it and promoting it, bringing people in here. Anyway, these constituents that called me are concerned about it, and what is going to happen? I mean, can somebody answer me? Where do we stop? When is, if we get five more requests in the next three months, what do we do? Then do we say, well, we need a policy? Or do we start now and say, let's formally lead a policy? When, what are we going to do? When is it going to stop? We have a policy for every other situation in the city of Wilmer. I wish there wasn't one for building permits, and we just took them on a case-by-case basis. But no, we have a policy on it. Same with planning and zoning. You know, there's, they got policies up to yin yang for every situation that comes along, from signs to how far you can build your chicken coop next to your neighbor's house. But this one does not have a policy. I wonder why don't we have a policy? But where, if we don't have a policy, where's it going to stop? Since this has come up, I'm sure that we're going to get more. I mean, I'd like to build another warehouse. Are they going to give Ron Christiansen tax abatement for doing a warehouse? And I can hire two more employees to, you know, fulfill that part of it, but that's just an example. But where does it stop? The other side of the story.
Counselman Dachan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for what you've said. I think Councilmember Christiansen hit the nail right on the head. We just recently developed a new charter for our city. That Home Rule Charter is called the Citizens Constitution. It's how we do business for the citizens who elect us to represent them. It says in there that our biggest job is policy development. And Councilmember Christiansen is a And Councilmember Christensen is, is right. We need to have a policy first, so that we can fairly judge everybody. There isn't any doubt in my mind that you don't have a good proposal. I think that's, you've just described it. But we need a policy, so that the next time this comes up, we can go to the policy and decide whether or not it's a worthwhile project that we are voting on, because we're using We have a poor records-keeping system within our city. I've brought it up on a number of occasions, that we don't have enough documented due diligence with respect to what are we doing, why are we doing it, can we afford it for the next one or two years, but more importantly, in the economy that we find ourselves in, how do we sustain it for the long term? And I have a question for Mr. Rehnquist. You said that you were speaking for yourself. Did the Economic Development Commission vote on this? And if so, what was the vote from the Economic Development Commission?
Thank you for the opportunity, Councilmember Dacken. People usually regret that after the fact. The Economic Development Commission has not addressed this issue. I suspect it possibly could come up as an item at our next meeting. However, there was not a place for the EDC to, to, to take a, a role in this. I, I would, the city has used its business subsidy policy and tax abatement, tax increment financing, jobsy is all part of the business subsidy policy. I think if, if, if Bruce Peterson would like, I know he and I could sit down in a matter of a day or two and probably produce a policy. I will say, in economic development, it's been my experience that the more, that, that the more levels of control that a policy has, that it can usually be restrictive rather than permissive. And if we're to look after the, the Wilmer taxpayers best we can, I think in expanding economy, I think the creation of additional jobs, maybe new tax base won't be directly created by this in this facility, but it will be in a host and variety of other facilities. I think we could make a rather strong argument that, that this is, this is, excuse me for my impudence, but this is directly the business of the Wilmer City Council to further the interests of the Wilmer taxpayer. I think this is consistent with that, sir.
Any other questions?
You don't believe that the Economic Development Commission should have taken a stand on this?
Well, in, in terms of the, this is a city of Wilmer tax abatement. The EDC does not have a, we have an advisory voice, which I guess I have promoted, but as a group, we have not discussed this or, or made a recommendation. It's been our position that the, the county government and certainly the city government are certainly immune from any EDC levels of control. But if the, if the city would like recommendations from the EDC on projects, we would be happy to do so. Typically, your development committee will invite me to their meetings when they're, when they're, when they're on various issues.
Okay. And it's also, and probably the question's not for you, Mr. Rehnquist, but there are three taxing jurisdictions, the county, the city, and the school district, and it's my understanding that the school district is not going to participate. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, they, the, as tight as the budget is for the county and the city, the budgetary situation can even become, become more extreme for this, the school districts. And I don't know that the school district is going to be asked for this particular situation. In fact, most tax abatement situations, the school district is not asked to participate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Any further, Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions for you, Steve. Have a chair. I share some of Councilman Christensen's concerns on this, but I'm also, I mean, it's not free money. It comes out of the taxpayers' funds. And tax abatements don't have a very good history of working out real well, from what I read. I haven't read the article you've referred to, but I did read several others, including one from ICMA, which is an organization that our city administrator belongs to. And they have kind of, I think a lot of academicians that have studied the issue aren't very, don't find that they've worked out very favorably. That being said, I think the size of our community behooves us probably to have a convention center. And the one we've got, I do, I would agree, needs some upgrading. And I wasn't aware quite as many cities in the state that are similar in our size actually support and own their own convention centers. And while I'm pretty conservative fiscally and don't usually like the government involved in private enterprise, I certainly would prefer, I think, that conventions, that we have a first-class convention facility. And I think it's kind of nice that we have somebody that's willing to operate it for us. And I take Mr. Torgerson's remarks at heart when he says that it's not really a big profit center for them, so. And likewise, I don't think that it would be a big profit center for the city. And, and I wouldn't, also, I don't think I'm too much in favor of the city running it at their expense, so. I've been kind of torn on this, because I'm not a big fan of tax abatements, but there are some other pluses that I see here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Councilman Blake?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know, talk about policies, I know we, we have a bit of a TIF policy that we follow, but all these requests for TIF financing or tax abatements have always come before the council for, for approval and public hearing. You know, with, and we weigh each one, you know, on individual merits and whether or not, what it has for the public purpose, what that has for the community and what it means for the community. I think with this, we've got a long history with Torgerson Properties and the convention center. We participated in TIF financing with them when the convention center was initially built, which is twenty-five, twenty-six years ago, roughly speaking. And I, and it is a competitive business where they need to stay current, keep their facilities current and up to date. I think it's, brings tourism into town. Convention and Visitors Center, which allowed it, we do have a collective fee for, from the hotels, for to fund our Convention and Visitors Center, to promote tourism coming to town. By not promoting, or having a good convention center to promote, there wouldn't be much reason to, to have a Convention and Visitors Center, in my opinion. But I think this project is in the best interest of the city. As stated earlier, there's a number of convention centers that are owned by cities, and we know there are more than likely, most of them are not a profit center for the city. So, and you look at, you know, if the project is not built, what would happen? I think it would be a lot of impacts on the community. We would see a downturn in tourism, visitors. It would have a very substantial impact on the financial health of the whole community. So, I think this has been a great public-private partnership with the Torgerson Properties, and I think we should approve the abatement and continue with that partnership.
Any further discussion? Am I allowed to make a comment? Go ahead.
Well, just, just a few questions from staff. I alluded to the policy, and I'm glad to hear that other people in the council are forward-thinking that we should be sitting, setting policy. I think it's a good direction, that's what we should be doing. With that, I think this whole process is getting very cumbersome, and I was very frustrated over a year ago with the Lakeland Hotel project, because the lack of information that we received. Again, it, it shouldn't be that hard for, if a recommendation is coming from staff, and I don't know which staff person or which staff person, or consolidated, or they vote on it, I don't know how that's ever comes to be, or who's, who's bringing it to us that way, Charlie, but I'd like to know how that operates. It seems to me if we had a policy in place, we wouldn't have to deal with feelings from the heart and the passion that I've heard here tonight. This is not a personal issue against Torgerson Properties, this is a business. So whatever people think, don't take it personal. This is doing business with the taxpayers' dollars. We are spending the taxpayers' dollars to help a business. And that's what the bottom, short and long of it is. But with that, as I talked to Ron Christensen before, about at what point can we, can we say enough tax abatement? How are we going to be setting precedence? And every situation is a little bit different, but if we had the principal guidelines, that A, it will be, if you talk about tax increment financing policy we have right now, I believe the last time that was updated, we have, currently have a ten-dollar-an-hour per hour fee in there, less, I think Councilman DeBleke was the chairman of the, of the Community Development Committee, I mean, years and years ago, after I left in ninety-four. And he, they put a ten-dollar-an-hour minimum wage thing that should be applied to. That's very, 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 very outdated. And, you know, it should be more like fifteen dollars an hour, like a lot of the other communities have. A lot of other communities have policies that give protection for the city to restrict or to refund, or to, if in violation, have a right to rescind, which I believe in this case, in this policy that I read Saturday afternoon, I read, Saturday afternoon, I received this new proposed agreement, or this agreement that was somehow formed, I don't know who by, or by whom, or whatever. It definitely wasn't the people that were elected here that, that came up with this different, different policy than what was announced two weeks ago at a hundred percent tax abatement. I, I had no input into it, and all of a sudden, we're dealing with another policy or another, somewhat of a policy, is we adapt, adopt this, it's, it's going to be setting precedence. I'm, I'm against, I'm for tax abatement. I'm not against it. I'm not against growth. But I am concerned about the citizens have been saying to me, not one, not one individual, I've talked to very, very prominent business people in this community, who don't believe in it. They believe that with the cash flow from an operation like that, they should very easily, easily be able to sustain a longer payback, and that it could be very, very well-done. And the other issue that I alluded to with Ron earlier was the issue of, of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have an outstanding Convention and Visitors Bureau, done a great job. Without that, Torgersons would not be as successful as they have been. We have promoted and supported that with, not the city of Wilmer taxpayers, but with the lodging tax, we have promoted every business that's related to the tourism department. That was, that's been over twenty-seven years we've been doing that, and they do an excellent job. We are supporting you, Tom, and we are supporting your operations, and we appreciate it. I want to tell you thank you for doing that, and the convention center has been a success. I don't think it's appropriate for the city, or the city to take our tax dollars, and here we have a list of ten, let's say twenty, goals and objectives that the city council has formulated and we want to accomplish, all of them related to money. What we're saying now is, we don't care as much about these twenty items, or ten or twenty items, and how we're going to finance them. We'll deal with those later, and we'll tax the citizens to take care of them. But in the meantime, we're going to take care of your needs for expansion, remodeling a facility with their money. But you've been in business for thirty years at the convention center. That's an ongoing process, just like somebody who owns an apartment building. They, they accumulate so much money each month, and they realize that eventually, they're going to have to remodel it. But related to the job issue, I can't, and I apologize if I offended anybody when I said minimum wage jobs, because I did not have the data as to what type of jobs you provided, or what pay they have. We still don't have that information. Based on your assumptions, on your net, it's about nine dollars an hour. I know that tourism is different than an industrial manufacturing company where you have to pay more. I can't see the direct benefit to the taxpayers in this situation. I think we've helped you, and we're going to continue to help you. We appreciate you being here, Mr. Ferguson. But I, I don't think it's proper use to stall the indebtedness that we have, to take care of our, our existing problems that have been ongoing for years and have been delayed. We are faced with the issue of local government aid being cut by the governor, another twenty million dollars, we're going to be hit with that. We've been hit for the last two or three years. Somehow, we've had to make up that difference and cut our budget. So now we're asked to cut our budget and raise taxes on the citizens again to take care of your needs. And in this case, I don't see the job benefits, I don't see the job growth, whether it's full-time or part-time. Not, not pushing anybody down because that's the type of job they have, or you for what you're paying. But I don't see the big benefit. The only people that really benefit from these profitably are the people that are related to the tourism department. And that's my opinion, not based on my personal opinion, but from the opinion of all the phone calls, and I have not had one person that was in favor of this. And they all were saying we should have a policy in place, we don't have to go through this type of scrutiny. Thank you.
Any further, Councilman Fegley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for everyone to come, and thank you, Mr. Torgerson, for telling how, how much you love Wilmer. I hope the people that are against this also know that the city of Rochester is asking the state for thirty-seven million dollars to upgrade their convention center. So I hope you call your representative and senator to tell them, "Don't send state dollars there, because that's our money, too." I think this is an excellent project, it's just going to benefit Wilmer. We did this for the Midwest Campus, and look what they're doing out there. And they need a place to hold conventions. It's going to be right here at the Holiday Inn. It, it's just a win-win. I know there's some councilmen up here that are concerned over the civic center, because it doesn't meet budget. If we had to build our own convention center, it's going to cost us more than twenty-three thousand dollars a year to reimburse them, so I, it's a no-brainer for me. I just, it's a good project, and thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, thank you, sir. And if I can make a couple more remarks. I, reading the agreement that's involved here, that the city's committing to, I think the taxpayers should be aware that it does require, or it has clawback provisions. In other words, if we don't see, I mean, this is an optimistic project, and if the optimism doesn't come to pass, if we don't create the additional jobs, it provides here in the agreement for twenty-five additional jobs over and above the current full-time equivalent job base that exists at the complex out there, the money has to be paid back. So I don't, that reduces the, I think, risk to the taxpayers, which I've shared from the beginning of this project, incidentally. I made a specific request of our newspaper to print an article stating that, on tax abatements, tax dollars, in this case, future tax dollars, you know, we're not going to collect, we have to pay them back, and it's the limit. collect, we have to pay them back, and it's the limit of about, what was it, $19,000 a year, and then it tails off in, starting in year six until the completion of the 10th year. But the taxpayers would not be at risk unless the city raises its, increases its budget requirements, and that's a risk, because obviously lately budgets haven't, don't have a very good track record of going down. But I think taxpayers should be aware that the agreement that's involved here does require Torgerson Properties to repay the money if things don't come to pass as anticipated, or required by the statute that the agreement is drawn pursuant to. So, like I say, I wasn't, I was very, had very mixed feelings about this, about tax abatements, I'm not a big fan of them. I do agree with the other concerns here about the city having a firm policy. I think it's a good idea, we don't have one, but the project came here before we had the policy, so, and I don't see that as a good reason not to proceed with it, and I'd like to thank you for coming in and taking the time and making such a nice presentation. For somebody who doesn't do public speaking, you did an excellent job. Thank you.
Any further comments? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, was unaware that the, many other cities, or many of the convention cities, convention centers are owned and operated by cities, and I know they aren't making any money doing it. So I appreciate that information coming out. You know, I'm not totally against this, I'm just bringing up citizens' concerns, and we have to be aware of that, because they're the ones that elect us. And I do agree that the convention center is a big benefit for the city of Wilmer, there's no doubt about it. If we didn't have it here, wouldn't have as many hotels, for sure, or restaurants. So I'm not totally against it. I started the conversation this evening because no one else wanted to speak, and I appreciate all the information that's been had, and all your work and your love for Wilmer, I appreciate it very much. So I'm not totally against it. Anybody else got anything to say?
Am I allowed to say something?
If you pass the cabal.
Not if it's a position on a debate, you'd have to vacate your presiding officer position. You can ask a question, but you can vacate.
If I have to ask a question, I have to vacate?
No, you can ask a question, but you can't make a position statement of-
Okay, I would like to ask a question. Can we come to some type of an agreement between us and the Torgersons? Scaling back the abatement, while we set or manufacture or come up with a policy, can we do that?
The city does not have a specific tax abatement policy, but the city has a business incentive policy, or a tax increment financing policy, and those are the same guidelines that we followed. And I believe those are the same guidelines that the city council has used on the four prior abatements that the city has granted, the most recent of which, I guess, would probably be the Midwest Technology Campus, and those, you know, and the things that were evaluated are job creation, tax base enhancement, the impact on the municipal services, and what's the overall community impact amenities offered to the community, and so those are some of the factors that were evaluated there. To answer Councilman, Chance, your question, and Councilmember Amen's question on how that was developed, again, the staff looked at the project, looked at the level of jobs, looked at the level of investment, and made the recommendation that we did, and it is just that, a recommendation, and that recommendation even stepped down the tax abatement agreement, the tax abatement request. It had initially been discussed at the Community Development Committee as a 100% 10-year abatement, and we went back and we scaled that down to a, down to a lesser tax abatement, a 10-year abatement, but as has been described this evening, an abatement that steps down over those 10 years, starts at 100%, goes down to 75%, then goes down to 50%, and then thereby reducing the risk to the city as well. And then, as Councilmember Johnson has pointed out, and is in the agreement, and again, any tax incentive, any TIF or any tax abatement always comes with an agreement that does have clawback provisions, and that's something the city has done, and all cities typically do, which if those targets for jobs and such are not met, then the applicant or the developer has to pay that back. So, the city council can certainly act on this abatement while formulating a policy for the future, or provide us guidance on how to, on that. I mean, that was discussed, again, at the Community Development Committee, in terms of where there's specific guidance and guidelines that the council wanted going forward in an abatement policy, but you do have the request before you, you certainly, there's no reason, nothing precludes you from acting on it while you adopt a policy for the future. And the last thing I would like to say is, I think any policy that we adopt is not going to preclude a public hearing and people coming to you that are either for or against it. There's no policy that we can adopt that will remove that kind of, the review, remove that from the process. So you will always, regardless of what policy we create, what guidelines we follow, I suspect we will have other meetings, public meetings, where there are individuals who speak for or against the abatement, and you will have to make that decision.
Councilman Amen?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Charlene, for that. What we received for paperwork, or for financial perspectives, or long-term indebtedness, or the, the financial health of the issue before us with tourism properties has been received. We've received this policy Saturday, or we received this agreement Saturday, and we received one piece of paper that showed the request for tax abatement from staff, that's it. And then, we're expected to sit here as elected officials representing the 10,000 voters own property, or 10,000 constituents that vote in our election, and we're supposed to make a decision based on that? I don't think it's even possible to comprehend anybody who is an elected official that can say, yes, I have all the information I need. That's what I was, why I'm opposed to the tax abatement. I think a compromise in this situation, until we get a policy in place, would be to offer them, because I, too, listened tonight, and changed some of my thoughts on the positives of what it would cost to have a convention center in the community, and I appreciate that, I've always appreciated the property. I love going to your restaurants, my wife loves the pizza, I love the service, I love the people there, I eat there as much as I can afford. I think a compromise in this case is that during this period, he's going to be down and out with the lack of people coming in during the construction phase of this project. I know what it's like to do remodeling, I know all things are disturbed, and it's a distraction, and people don't like that's going on. A compromise in this case, until we get a call, policy in place, we would offer them 100% abatement for the length of the construction period. I think that'd be a compromise, because I think a lot of people don't understand the full impact of this. That would be a good compromise, and that would be negotiations from the elected people who are responsible to offer this proposal, rather than for staff offering the proposal based on their assumptions. Furthermore, we also, when we make these decisions, Ms. Stevens, we should know exactly what the financial impact's going to be, or how much tax dollars we're going to have to charge or levy against our taxpayers in town, based on $100,000 home, $150,000, $200,000 businesses. We should know, and we should give that information to the public, so they know what they're going to be paying for. They know how much they're going to have to pay in increased valuation, and how much they're going to pay in taxes out of their back pocket to support this project. They have a right to know that. We've never given them. We've never given them that information. We have an obligation to do that. That's another thing that should be said in our policy. It should be open and transparent. There shouldn't be this type of contrast in emotion. It should be based on, this is what we can afford to do, let me hear from you. Right now, we're assuming, without really educating the public as to what their amount is. It might be a very minor part, $23,000 a year, or $16,000 a year, but now you're looking at the county, and I guess the school district's out of this one, but now it's 40%, 40% of your tax dollars, tax statement is from the county. Now, it's not just the City of Wilmer, which is only 14%, approximately 14% of your tax, your tax statement. Now, it's three times more of that. Okay, so it's changed, but none of that information has been given, and I think the people have a right to know before, to get educated. And right now, we haven't been educated on that, staff has not brought us anything. Why, I don't know, I think that should be number one thing, what's the impact on the community? And we're sitting here as elected officials, as part-time people, not full-time people, and we're asking very simple questions that I think the common people would ask, and we haven't gotten it. That's another reason for the policy. I would much rather not approve this, based on the issues that are brought forward, and from the hearings, and thoughts I've heard from my constituents, and I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Yes, thank you. I believe that Torgerson Properties are making a leap of faith here with the City of Wilmer, that they want to complete this project to that 100% that he talked about, that it'll be a win-win for the City of Wilmer. And I also think that in the document, we've put enough checks and balances in there, that if this isn't something, as it develops, that is good for the city, that we can take a look at it again. But I do think that this project will be very good, both for our community, for other jobs in our community, for tourism. I think it is a win-win, and I think they're asking us to just participate a little bit in it, and I sat next to a councilperson from Bemidji that is dealing with a great deal of issues with their city-owned, and I think we should be thankful that we have this facility here in Wilmer, and I think we should support this project, and tonight.
Thank you, Councilperson. Any further discussion?
Sure.
I think, Council-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make sure I had everything right here, some will be questions. The original request was for 100% abatement, is that correct? The original request was-
That was correct, yes. That was the original request, when it was discussed with the Community Development Committee a few weeks ago. That was the original request.
One of the phone calls I received this evening before the meeting was, you know, why don't we compromise here, and, you know, cut back on the abatement, and I see, it has been cut back. If I understand it right, years one through five is 100% abatement, years six through eight is 75%, and years nine and 10 is 50% abatement. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is what is being proposed.
Okay, so the public knows now that this abatement has been cut, somewhat of a compromise. Also, as Councilman Johnson stated, the, there is a clawback provision in the agreement with them stating that if they fail on their attempt to hire 24, or 25 new employees, full-time equivalents, FTEs, the city can clawback or get back taxes paid to them. Is that correct?
That is also correct, Councilman.
And is that done annually? I mean, is there's an annual report that says-
I'll let Mr. Peterson-
This is where we're at?
Explain the mechanics of that.
The city is required to file a copy of the business subsidy agreement with the state of Minnesota, and business subsidy reports are filed March of each year for each project that has a subsidy that qualifies under state law. So each March, we will be dealing with the developer to update their hiring, their employment information, and that gets submitted to the state, and the state reviews those reports and determines whether or not the project is in conformity with the agreement.
Okay, so then, TPI would give us the information we need to fill out in that forms, is that what the deal is?
We deal with the human resources people, and the accounting people of all of the firms that the city has business subsidies with, and we collect this information on an annual basis.
Okay, so then, we're going to be fully aware every year that they have continued their 25 FTEs?
And just to be, just to be clear, Councilmember Christensen, that they would be required to have a minimum of those 25 FTEs by January of, January 1st of 2016.
Correct, I read that in there, thank you. And then, another issue, or not issue, concern is the, how the abatement is paid to them is, we do collect the taxes every year from them, 100%.
That's correct.
For the full value or extended value as construction goes along, and at the end of the year, we determine how much additional they paid above and beyond what was 100% when they started, and we write a check to them back, is that correct?
Yes. That would be one way to do it. In this particular case, in the agreement, we stated that the $23,000 was the 100% base amount. If it turns out to be less than that, that lower number will be the base amount, and then it will take 75% of that and 50% of the new number. But in the, in the agreement, they invoice the city twice a year for that portion of the taxes to be abated, and we run it through finance, and checks are cut twice a year for that purpose.
Okay, then, understanding what you just said, the numbers that we have before us could be, they're estimated.
They are estimated.
They could be less.
They could be less. They could not be more, they could be less.
Okay, presently, in the agreement that we have with them, the total over a 10-year period of tax abatement estimated is $189,750. That's to the City of Wilmer.
That is the maximum exposure under this particular business subsidy for the city.
And it could actually be $160,000.
Could be.
We don't know. Okay, the county, they're going to the county tomorrow, they're going to consider tax abatement also, and I understand that they're going to see what we do tonight before they make the decision. They chickened out, they should have done theirs first. The amount that the county is going to be responsible for, as I understood, is a little bit more than what the city's is? Is it like $200,000?
The amount that the county is responsible for, their base amount is estimated at $39,700 per year?
Are they doing 100%? Or they-
The proposal to the county, or the information we've gotten from the county is that they would propose the same sliding scale as the city's.
175 and 50.
That's correct.
And again, just to clarify, I believe that the county commission tomorrow will consider setting a hearing for it. They will not have their hearing tomorrow, they will have their hearing if they go forward, setting a hearing for May.
That's what I understood. So we're talking about probably $400,000 total, city and county, somewhere in that area. A county of 44,000-plus people. I think I understand it, and I, one other question I had was, is it clear that a company or entity in Wilmer can or cannot retroactively ask for such a freeze, tax freeze?
Yes.
Can, they can or can't?
You cannot.
Okay, so it has to be done prior to, or prior to commencement of construction or whatever. So Mills Ford can't come back and say, you know, we'd like to have a tax abatement because we just, we're adding on presently?
Well, they could say that, but they would also have the option to not build if they felt that strongly about it.
It's already under construction, correct?
They've begun, they could terminate at any point.
But I mean, they can't come and ask right now during construction?
I think the question, Bruce, is a, can a company that's already begun a project come in the middle of the project and ask for an abatement based upon jobs already created?
I don't believe there's anything in statute that would preclude that, I would defer to the city attorney, but they've created no employment. They've created no tax base because there's been no assessment of their property, there's been no opportunity to operate a new facility, so they, of course, would not have created any employment. So I do not believe that there's any timing in the statute that would preclude that.
Just some calculating here, just one second. I had one other question, it slipped my mind here. Oh, do we know if the Chamber of Commerce surveyed or polled their members on this particular tax abatement? You know, normally, when we have a question before the council, something like this, they will poll their members, and they have 500, 600-plus members. Do we know that that's been done at all, and what any feedback was from that? I know there isn't a representative here tonight, but-
I don't know if that was done or not, I can't answer that question, I'm sorry. I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
Because I believe they do rent, or the landlord is TPI, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I don't believe that's the case, Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, the chamber owns their own facilities.
They do?
Yes, they do.
Okay. But they did not do a poll or survey, nobody knows that.
Not that we're aware of.
I find that kind of strange, because normally they come to us with their polls and their I got 20 pages of notes, and, well, I can't think of anything else presently, but I think I got it straight.
Why does it begin in 2016?
In terms of the employment count, I believe that's to allow them to, you know, begin their construction project and get underway, and then have a little bit of leeway in terms of the new jobs being created. So that gives them until January of, January 1 of 2016.
Doesn't Mr. Ammon's suggestion make sense to have the abatement while they're constructing them, as compared to delaying the payback on this, taxes?
That's for the council to determine. I mean, there's a motion, there's been a motion that has been made, but, you know, if there's a desire to amend that motion or make a different recommendation, you certainly can, as a council, do that.
There is a motion in front of us, and this is a roll call, so it will be a roll call.
Mr. Mayor. More discussion?
I move to amend the motion to include a two-year tax abatement, 100 percent, for the two years during construction period, and revise the existing agreement that's before us to reflect that.
Do we need a second on that?
Yes, sir.
I'll second it for discussion, because I have a question.
We have a motion and a second to revise, or to amend to the motion of 200, I'm sorry, two years at 100 percent. Am I right, am I saying that properly?
That's correct.
And at this point, we'll open it up for discussion, if there is a discussion. Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we were to do that, what would the total cost be? Would it just be the 23 times 2, or is it be the total? He said total, so it would be what they're paying presently plus that?
Better defined.
It would be, they are currently paying roughly $21,000, years a city share, it would be $21,000 times 2.
Okay, so it would be $42,000 total?
That is correct.
Okay. So it'd be pretty minimal.
So, Councilman?
And actually, the value could go down during construction, because they wouldn't be in business in part of it, so taxes could be down for them.
Are you talking, excuse me, are you talking about the amendment?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I just think that would be a good thing, is I, again, I see what happens during your modeling and how disruptive they are in stores, and some retail establishments actually say that once they do remodeling, they're, when I restored or remodeled some of the businesses in town here, they said that during that time, actually, sales went up, because they think there's a sale going on, and a lot of times there are, and it's actually been better. But in this case, you can definitely see the impact on the amount of people that are going to be coming to your place, and the amount of conventions that you're going to be able to book, and the size. So there's going to be a fiscal loss in your business compared to what you have right now, and that's why I think I can support that. I think that would be a compromise, and it would be saying that we do care. We do care about you being financially successful. I want you to succeed out here, I want the convention center to succeed, and we do appreciate you being in town here, Mr. Torgerson. But I believe that would be a compromise from the people that I've heard from and the information I've heard tonight versus saying no. I think a compromise is an order, and if the county would do that, I'm sure it would add up. It's not maybe as much as you would like, I don't know what your long-term plans are. If it would not go through, I'm not sure if you're going to scale back, or if you're not going to do the project, or whatever. I sure and hope and encourage you that it would continue either way. Thank you.
Mayor? Mary Annish?
Councilman?
I'd just like a clarification of what the advantage of moving that two years, why you're trying to change this whole thing. I think this is something they've agreed to in the proposal, the way it was worked out. I'm just trying to understand what the reason why you would do that.
I would let Councilman Ammon answer that.
I think I just stated everything. It's, we are the elected people who are accountable to our constituents. What I have heard from the people that have contacted me, who have actually literally stopped me in the streets, have said no. And I'm basing my opinion based off of what the constituents have told me. And for the two-year period, it's saying, we do care, we do care about your business being in town here, and I think I made my point very valid. It's not saying, no, we don't want you here, we don't want you to succeed. This would be at least saying that. And also, when I look at the local government aid, Mr. Nelson, we just received from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities that the governor is looking at cutting $20 million out of the proposed 2012 local government aid, and that it's going to be increasing later. So we're going to be dealing with less money, and our priorities are going to be changed. And we don't have that information, we don't know, we're uncertain in that. That's my concern also, how we're going to tax the people to pay for the loss.
Would you like to re-butt that?
Yes, if I understand the local government aid, the cut that's being proposed is still going to be an increase in local government aid for Wilmer. They're cutting the proposed increase from 80 to 60, but it's actually going to be still an increase for us. My clarification is, are you talking about offering tax abatement for two years versus 10 years?
Exactly.
I'm trying to understand what your motion was.
Exactly. Two years versus 10 years, 100 percent abatement. Furthermore...
The motion has been made and amended.
That's the amendment.
Excuse me, I think there is some, just for clarification, Councilmember Ammon, you, you're proposing a two-year, 100 percent tax abatement, so not the increase, but the current taxes? Is that what you're proposing for the 100 percent? I mean, we're just, I think there's some clarity we need.
I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that. I'm looking at the current taxes that they have right now that are paying. After that, the period will be reassessing or reevaluating the property and the valuation, and then they'll be paid, they'll be paying a portion.
Is that the number, and that was the 42,000, Bruce?
City share.
The city share.
Is the city share what's important to remember, that two-year period, the city will be suffering that as a direct loss, as opposed to just not having access to the incremental increase after the project. So there is a substantial difference between the two.
That's correct.
Councilman Christiansen?
Mr. Torgerson stated that about $1.5 million is going to improve the convention center, $1.5 million of the total. I guess I look at that $400,000 approximate, city and county is going toward the convention center, and I think we'd be getting a good deal out of it. And with that, I'll withdraw my second.
So we're back to the original motion?
You have to ask if there's any other second first.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Now it dies for a lack of a second.
Let's call for the question.
We have a roll call for the...
No, that's a motion, so you have to get a second to his. Actually, he's in a motion to close debate. That is a separate motion.
A motion to close debate. Do we have a...
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay. All those in favor of closing the debate, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. So now we are to the motion of...
The original motion is to approve the tax abatement, as outlined in your agreement.
The original, we have a motion on the table, and this is a roll call.
Yeah, it is, approve the resolution and authorize mayor and administrator to execute tax abatement and business subsidy agreement in substantial conformance to the draft agreement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I'm going to vote aye, with the condition that staff work on a policy immediately and bring it to committee.
Councilmember Ammon?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay.
Motion carries. Do we need to put in the minutes? Councilman Christiansen's?
Well, I think the staff has...
Point of order, I don't think that that's something that can be done during a vote.
Mr. Mayor, we will be discussing that next week at our community development.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that being said, we move into the...
Did we just take a five-minute?
A motion at recess.
Let's do the public forum first.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Could we just take a five-minute break?
I guess we can do that.
Do you need a motion for that?
We don't, he was just saying we take that after the open forum, so...
Let's do the open forum first.
And that pretty much is done. Maybe not, there's one person, you got it?
Is there one person signed up?
Yes, there is.
There is, sir. He might be the one sitting there.
And that is?
Bob.
Bob Enos? Open forum, Mr. Enos. Would you come up to the podium and identify yourself?
My name is Bob Enos. I live at 905 Trot Avenue Southwest. If you can't tell by my accent, I'm not from here. I came here from Boston, Massachusetts, about five years ago. This has become my adopted home, Wilmer has, and I truly love it here. I think this town has something really special. My brother and I spent a couple of years touring this state. We wanted to get about two hours outstate out of Minneapolis, so he could continue to have good health care that we were used to over in Boston. And I hope you're all saying prayers for my hometown tonight.
Yeah.
We had a couple of years to do driveway tours. We started down south around Winona, wound up traveling into the cities up towards Plymouth, west through Monticello, over to St. Cloud, made the loop down 23. I saw the flatlands, I got to town here, met some nice people, and this is where we stopped. So we could have, we could have lived anywhere we wanted to. We didn't have to move to Wilmer. We like it here. So that's, I'm telling you all that because I'm used to answering this question at least once a week. Why did you move to Wilmer? All of that said, and the Minneapolis, I should say Minnesota, nice business is mostly true. I came from the home of road rage, where we use the one-finger salute to get in front of anybody who's driving in front of us. When I came to Minnesota, I just couldn't get over people moving over to let me when I was lost, trying to get off or onto a ramp, actually pulling over and letting me go by. That sort of took a little bit of a turn south for me the other day, and I've been keeping my mouth shut for these past five years, because I know most of you people around here figure you East Coasters talk way too much, think way too highly of yourselves. And I thought it was best for me to get to learn the culture around here. About, I guess it was two months ago, I saw one of, one of the number of articles in our local paper here that began to distress me. It had to do with Councilman Christiansen. Made some awfully disparaging remarks about his, what they called nativist leanings towards developments happening in a town that's obviously very reflective of America today, and that its complexion and livelihood and economy is changing at lightning speed. Just means that this wasn't Oz that I moved to after all, it was just like every other small city in America. Little while after that, I read an article that the chief did an awful skewering of Mary Annish here, on a personal level. Kind of tried to characterize this guy that I've got to know recently, who seems to be a fine gentleman, with the best interests of the city at heart. A sort of angry, doddering leader who takes out grudges against people when he hears things that he doesn't like to hear. But the last one that really bothered me the most was about Councilman Ammon here. This was on April the 6th, and what was so different about this coverage had to do with the fact that there were two articles in one editorial that seemed to intertwine this whole debate that you folks had tonight about the abatement to Torgerson Properties, but didn't really stop there. Seemed to really get very focused on what they kept hammering away as a dysfunctionality, not only of his leadership skills, but of all of yours. You know, I spent my first five years out of graduate school, working in senior management and planning and contracting for a mayor of a capital city of one of the New England states, who at that time was the youngest sitting mayor in the United States. I learned a lot working with that fellow. He was a great politician, his son got a little, his star got a little too close to the sun at one point, which was unfortunate, but he was a tenacious guy, had a way of hearing your name, the name of your child, and what school they were going to, and seeing five years later at a gathering, and remembering every one of those details, a skill that I don't have. He often bragged that he was so interested in meeting his constituents that he would gladly show up at the opening of an envelope if he got to meet new voters. But following that five-year period with him, I moved off to New York City, where I worked on Wall Street for about 12 years. So I'm telling you all this because I know something about hardscrabble, business dealing, and politics. I've got a few stars on myself. I'm at a new point in life where I'm not really going down that road anymore, but there was always sort of an unspoken agreement, just like you see in sports, about not hitting below the belt. Those three articles, those two articles and that editorial seemed to take the gloves off. There were no ground rules, and it was the first time that I had ever felt compelled to write a letter to the newspaper about politics in my new, chosen hometown. I'm a little bit of a writer, spent a couple of days writing that piece, and it was short and sweet, about 300 words. I sent it in, interestingly enough, got a reply from, not a staff person, but from the publisher, who I'd never met before, I never have met him. I always had the impression that when you write a letter to the editor, you might be a crackpot, you might be smart, but it's just one man's opinion, and it doesn't get edited. He owns the paper, we don't get to edit his words. And I don't own the paper, but, you know, I want to have a voice here. He refused to publish my letter, because he took issue with some of the points with my analysis of those three articles, and the fact that I thought that it was very undignified and uncivilized behavior on the paper's part, and I thought it was quite unproductive and not helpful at all to this process. So I called the mayor, and I called Councilman Ammon, and I asked if they would kindly read my letter into the minutes of this meeting, because that can't possibly be the only venue to communicate with my fellow citizens, many of whom I know feel the same level of disgust about partisan politics in America that I feel. And with your permission, I'd like to read what I have to say.
Is it going to be brief?
As brief as I can make 300 words.
All right, let's do that. Can you pull your microphone?
Bob, can you grab your microphone, you're a taller man.
How's that?
That's better.
Thank you. So I submitted this letter to the West Central Tribune about a week ago. On Saturday, April the 6th, our newspaper covered the proposed $230,000 tax break for Torgerson Properties, lambasting city councilman Steve Ammon in the process. The personal tack on Mr. Ammon seemed to resemble earlier rants concerning Mayor Frank Yanish and Councilman Ron Christiansen. Let's examine the Central, West Central Tribune's logic on this one. Mr. Ammon was alleged to show quote-unquote "poor leadership" by expressing skepticism that perhaps there's very little upside to taxpayers for giving Torgerson a gift of nearly a quarter million dollars in property tax relief while we struggle through a sluggish economy and reduce state aid to schools. Ammon's quote "highly inappropriate" end quote observation that adding 3 hotel, 30 hotel housekeepers to our economy might be nothing to brag about, and his naive and ill-advised quote-unquote ideas on resuscitating an anemic downtown... quote-unquote ideas on resuscitating an anemic downtown drew the paper's ire as well. Torgerson Properties, a Wilmer success story, employs over 500 people in more than 30 hotels and restaurants throughout Minnesota. Its fortunes will not rise or fall from this tax break. Average wages for hotel workers are under $9 an hour, mostly unskilled jobs with no opportunities for advancement. So, no, not all jobs are created equal. If the workers aren't provided health insurance, do you want to guess who will? Finally, the paper's editor states, quote, "Downtown Wilmer has evolved into a great mix of medical facilities, retailers, and some housing." Who's being naive here? But what is most disturbing is our newspaper's newly acquired propensity for personal attacks and character assassinations. This is the stuff of reality television, election campaigns, and tabloid journalism. In many ways, Wilmer is at a tipping point. It's time to encourage more people in this community to engage in problem-solving, to look for truly big and bold ideas, and to breathe new life into our city. The alternative is, we can complacently accept business as usual while we watch our community wither on the vine. Criticism is fine, but let's hear some alternative ideas, and while you're at it, a little more civility wouldn't hurt a thing. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Let's take a five-minute break, we'll be back here in five minutes tonight.
8:50.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report, and I guess Dennis is gone today, so would that be you, Tim?
I guess so, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The Finance Committee met at 4:45 PM, Monday, April 8th, at Conference Room, at Conference Room 1 in the City Office Building. Those present were Dennis Anderson, myself, Councilman Fagerly, Councilman Nelson, City Administrator Charlene Stevens, Finance Director Steve Okens, and City Clerk-Treasurer Kevin Halliday. No public comment was offered at the meeting. The next item of business was the Western Interceptor financing amended budget. Staff presented a revised budget for the Western Interceptor project. Current estimates show this project qualifies for a PFA loan of $1,886,812 and a PFA grant of $763,205, both of which have been incorporated into the revised budget. In addition, a segment was added to the project within the industrial park area, which is proposed to be funded with $345,000 from the Local Option Sales Tax Program. After discussion, motion was made, seconded and passed, recommending the following resolution, and I would introduce that resolution to set the Western Interceptor revised budget at $4,882,179.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution setting the Western Interceptor revised budget at $4,882,179. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Next item of business were financial reports. The committee received the following: 2012 interest dividends by institution, historical interest and dividends for 2001 to 2012, December 31, 2012, cash and investments, fourth quarter 2012 investment activity, cash investment balances from 2001 to 2012, February 2013, Rice Hospital, financial information. Discussion included the decline in interest rates over the past few years, at which time Chair Anderson stated that Bremmer Bank had been providing 2.6% interest on library and county funds deposited with that institution, and suggested staff research possibility of a similar arrangement. Chair Anderson also suggested the council receive quarterly reports on a global scale reflecting the revenues, expenditures in relation to the budget. The matter was, this matter was taken for information only. Next item was future agendas. Staff noted that future agendas include the 2013 street improvement funding, waste treatment rate adjustments, a report on the Local Option Sales Tax Fund, the 2014 budget calendar, the Public Works Reserve Report, and the first quarter reports from Rice Hospital and Wilmer Utilities. That item was also taken for information only. Last item of business. At Chair Anderson's request, Administrator Stevens provided an update on the local government aid bill that the coalition sponsored. Based on the governor's new formula, the city of Wilmer could receive an additional $387,000 in LGA. However, there has been some discussion that the LGA bill may be reduced from 80 million to 60 million, which would impact this anticipated increase. That matter also was taken for information only. And if there's no further comments or discussion, I move to file those minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report for April 8th, 2013. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Councilman Christensen and the Public Works Safety Committee report for April 9th, 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda was 2013 projects, involves two resolutions, one to order preparation assessment rolls, and the second one to set the hearing. Our committee reviewed a summary of the recent bids that were open for five of the 2013 improvement projects. At this time, the city council is required to declare the cost to be assessed in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 429 State of Minnesota statutes. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to declare cost to be assessed and order the preparation of the assessment rolls for the 2013 street and other improvements.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded for the resolution to declare cost to be assessed and order the preparation of the assessment roll for the 2013 and other improvements. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Our committee was also informed that staff is in the process of preparing the assessable footage and amounts for each assessed affected property. It is at this time, it is at this time, the affected property owners are to be notified of their assessed amount and a hearing date set. Again, after some talking, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution that we set an assessment hearing for May 6, 2013 at 7:02 PM.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to set an assessment hearing for May 6, 2013 at 7:02 PM. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Our second item had to do with the airport tenant and hangar report. This is for information only. Our city planner and airport manager came before the committee by request to provide a report on their current occupants slash owners of the various hangars at our airport. Currently, the city has 23 privately-owned hangars. Many of the tenants have remained the same since they were constructed, except for three recent sales. The current rental rate for the city-owned hangars is 15 cents per square foot, with an increase to 16 percent, 16 cents per square foot projected in 2015. The list of tenants' names was attached in our information packet. This is for information only. Our third item had to do with BNSF agreement and easement for our Wilmer Avenue crossing. As part of the process to alter the Wilmer Avenue Southwest Railroad crossing location and create a quiet zone, an agreement and an easement with the railroad are required. The planning commission has approved the easement, and an appraisal was completed indicating a $12,500 value. BNSF is requesting $15,000, which is slightly higher, but staff believes it is in the city's best interest to pay the requested amount in order to avoid delaying the project. Funding for the crossing is coming from our Local Option Sales Tax Program. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the agreement and easement with BNSF and authorize the mayor and administrator to execute the same.
I'll second the motion.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the agreement and easement with BNSF and authorize the mayor and administrator to execute the same. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Thank you. I had an email from a constituent saying, well, why aren't we doing the Trot Avenue quiet zone also? And we are doing it. It is in this year's project. We just need an easement for the Wilmer Avenue because we're changing where the crossing is taking place. That was it.
Any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Our fourth item was a report from the police department. This is for information only. Captain Jim Felton briefed the committee and answered questions relating to the police department activities. Our newest police officer, Mr. Ben Heneman, is nearing completion of his training and expected to be out on patrol sometime in June. He announced the day of graduation is scheduled for April 25, 2013. The question of parking enforcement on Saturdays was discussed, and it was the consensus of the committee to discuss this matter after the parking study information is received. Item number five for information only also was the report from our fire department. Chief Hendrickson reported that there have been 61 fire calls for the first quarter 2013 with $272,500 in damages and no injuries to firefighters.
In a conversation with county engineering staff, Lauren Engelby, who is the county's ditch staff person, the benefits of the petition or the benefits of taking over this portion of twenty-three A were explained in that the city would be able to make improvements within the city limits that would affect our own stormwater system without having to get permission and buy-in from the balance of the property owners on ditch twenty-three A. At the committee level, it was determined that this was sufficient reason to petition for the improvement, or to petition for the segment of the ditch to come under municipal jurisdiction. It's important to remember that the ditch will have some work done this summer that will come at no cost to the city, and that is work that they had already contracted for prior to the city's petition.
Also, as far as, it says here that the ditch is in good condition. Good is an excellent. I'm just trying to understand. Right now, right now, we have, the agreement that we have with the county takes care of maintenance of our ditch, so we're going to be asked to maintain and take over the operations and maintenance long-going for many, many of the rest, the rest of the life of this agreement, unless somebody wants it back to maintain it. So that's going to mean an expense, and I'm not familiar with engineering costs and how much cost there is associated with this, but wouldn't it be in our best interest to just leave it in the county's hands and participate with them on ongoing maintenance issue?
That is a county ditch, but currently, the city pays roughly fifty-five percent of the maintenance on the entire length, not just on the portion that's in the city of Wilmer. And by taking over that portion that's in the city of Wilmer, our perceived or redetermination of benefits to the portion outside of town is reduced, so we are taking over one hundred percent of the responsibility for that portion within the city of Wilmer, but our responsibility for the discharge and any other portion of the repairs downstream is reduced. So it, I believe it isn't the best interest of the city to take this on. We did the same thing for ditch ten, that portion of ditch ten that crosses through the old airport property and industrial park, simply because we need to have the flexibility to make the improvements to those, those systems for our stormwater conveyance without having to depend on the people downstream to agree with us.
Well, it just didn't be much easier if, you know, we had some written proof that everything was, not trusting, it was just, just good, just good decision-making. If we had something showing that they're approved by an engineer that is in good condition, I hate to have a unnecessary expense hit us. Also, if there is a financial impact that's going to be benefiting us, I think it's good, but in this case, not knowing what all these numbers are, it's hard to make a judgment call. Right now, if we're currently paying forty-five percent and they're paying fifty-five, we have joint participation on the entire ditch. I don't know what, I don't know what the real impact is financially, Bruce, and I'm not sure if anybody's done that study. I'm just a little concerned as to the urgency of this and if we shouldn't maybe just say, hey, can staff come back with some numbers to show the cost of maintenance through all these years and what we participated in? And this is the condition after the county engineer's approval? And also, we haven't talked this over with the Stormwater Task Force. I don't know if that's going to have an issue or not, but I'm just a little hesitant not in what the urgency is in this. I'd just like to be thorough, and I'm wondering if maybe this couldn't be brought back to a committee after staff in the county sit down and talk about it. It may be not, not be necessary, but I'd just be, like to have the numbers clear.
Well, let me follow up on that a little bit. The opportunity to petition is generally done concurrently with a redetermination of benefits, and the county is going to be considering those, that redetermination of benefits tomorrow as the county ditch authority. The county board will meet in the afternoon at the ditch, as the ditch authority. So what we were trying to do was to get the petition in front of the county board so that they could take that petition into consideration in the course of redetermining benefits. The city can choose to do nothing at this time, and we will continue to pay fifty-five percent of the entire system. The way I understand it, the county maintains a, a system of record-keeping whereby the condition of the ditches are evaluated and rated, and that with the improvements that are scheduled for twenty-three A adjacent to the former wastewater treatment plant this next summer, everything within the city limits will be brought to a standard where there's no scheduled maintenance for quite some time. So that's really the only way to judge whether or not the system is adequate. Anybody'd look at it and say, well, it must not be adequate because the stormwater backs up in town, but that's a fact of the watershed, and it really isn't reflective of the condition of the ditch itself. I guess staff will stand by its recommendation that we proceed with the petition at this time. For those reasons, I think it's in the long-term best financial interest of the city to do so, but certainly defer to council's decision.
No, I thank you very much, Bruce. That explains a little more detail. I was just pondering after we recommended at the meeting, and I appreciate your explanation. That helps me very much. Thank you very much.
Can I add to that, Bruce, and say that wasn't this fellow at a committee meeting that this is all on tape, that he agreed to do this?
That's correct, and there was a preliminary approval done a short while ago. It took us some time to get the actual petition drafted. I think it's important that we do focus on the benefits, and at the time that Lauren was at the committee, he did provide financial examples of maintenance costs and how it does work to the city's benefit with the redetermination.
Thank you. So we have the motion and second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Just to be clear on that, the ditch branches that were, were in that motion or that resolution, was everything up to the bypass? Past the bypass is county, so it's, we do have full, one-hundred percent control of all the ditches within the city. Item number six, our last item, had to do with miscellaneous items. This was for information only. The closing of the access to Robins Island, the main interest on business seventy-one twenty-three was discussed. Police told us the entrance was a barricade to stop off-road use of vehicles, which was tearing up some of the park grass. Several areas in the park did receive some extensive damage. That was the end of our meeting. If there are no further questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for April ninth, two thousand and thirteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of the Fast Access Program Resolution. Charlene, I understand you're going to handle that one.
Yes, this is a request of the city prosecutor, Tom Anderson. It is necessary for, it's necessary the city council pass, pass a resolution for the master subscriber agreement and fast access agreement, and this will allow the city attorney, city prosecutor to electronically access court records and documents from the state of Minnesota. And I would recommend that you pass the resolution authorizing mayor and city administrator to enter into the master subscriber agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass the resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to enter into a master subscriber agreement. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this something that we knew, we need to renew every once in a while, or is this brand-new?
This is brand-new, and I believe that, and in talking with the city prosecutor, Tommy Anderson, it will be necessary to pass the resolution this one time, not on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, what this is about is the courts are, have an initiative going to go paperless, and this program is a software to access, to give access to the prosecutors and the defense bar and the civil bar to court files when they're, electronic access when they're in the courtroom and out of the courtroom, they have access, so.
Thank you very much.
And it's a bit of a bumpy ride.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Consideration of liquor license renewals. Kevin, would you fill us in on that, please?
Mary Annish, members of the council, you have before you a list of establishments requesting renewal of their current liquor license. They're in the four categories as listed. They are all, been in existence at least for one full year, so it is stats recommendation that we approve all of these licenses on a roll-call vote for the renewal period of April twenty-five, two thousand and thirteen through April twenty-five, two thousand and fourteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve all the licenses by a roll-call vote for April twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen to April twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Consideration of City Park, City Park Special Event by On Sale Liquor License Holder Permit, Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery. Kevin, would you handle that for us?
Mary Annish, members of the council, you have before you a joint effort between Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery and the Wilmer Stingers to hold a Jimmy Buffett night on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and thirteen, in which there's an attempt to serve a full array of liquor. As you know, the Stingers only have a strong beer and wine license, and so they need to coordinate their efforts with a state liquor caterer, of which Mr. Baker and his business are in full state compliance. It is stats recommendation that we try this event and approve the special City Park liquor permit for that evening as shown.
To approve, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the permit on a roll-call vote of the consideration of the City Park Special Event, On Sale Liquor License Holder, the Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery LLC. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. We will now do proclamation by the mayor for National Day of Prayer, which this year is going to be held at the Wilmer Assembly of God Church. And I say, whereas the Thursday, May second, two thousand and thirteen, is designated as the National Day of Prayer, and whereas the mayor's prayer breakfast will be held on May second, two thousand and thirteen, at the Wilmer Assembly of God Church at six thirty A.M., I therefore be resolved that I, Frank Annish, do proclaim May second, two thousand and thirteen, as the day of prayer, and ask that the community commit to pray for the concerns of our city. In official recognition, I hereunto set my hand and accuse the seal of the city of Wilmer to be affixed. And I have signed this, and a copy of the actual proclamation will be given to Pastor Carestetter on Thursday. Miss Laney.
Actually, announcement of council committee.
Look, council, council committee meeting days. I'm sorry, Dennis, is wrong.
Bruce, we can have a meeting on the twenty-third, or Public Works, Public Safety, April twenty-third, Tuesday, four forty-five P.M.
Steve, Labor Committee.
Labor Committee is set up for the twenty-fourth of four forty-five, but prior to us announcing that for sure, I'd like to have full participation. Just wonder if we can have the majority of the council people there if there is a conflict, otherwise we can reschedule.
Is that a Wednesday?
It is Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, yes.
Can we, would you like a show of hands of who can be there?
Or anybody who can would work, sure.
Show of hands of those that can be there?
Can.
Can or can't.
Can, C.A.N., can.
C.A.N.
Okay, we do have the.
All right, it'll be at four forty-five, I think.
Four forty-five. And Rick, we have the Community Development Meeting.
Thursday, April twenty-fifth, four forty-five. We'll be discussing an abatement policy.
You know, Finance Committee.
And Tim at Finance.
Finance? Yes.
What day?
April twenty-second, Monday.
Four twenty-two.
At four forty-five.
Thank you. And we move into Miss Laney, and I can't read my writing.
Councilmember Dacken, I believe.
Councilmember Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My wife and I were out April fifth to the Wilmer Curling Club, the eighth annual banquet, an annual meeting, and wanted to say thank you to Mr. Brizendine from Community Ed and Rec. That, that curling club organization is a fabulous group of people. The speaker there that night was a young husband and wife who are really top-notch curlers, and they love the Wilmer Curling Club and had many great things to say about the program that's out there. And so that primarily, I think, is due to Kevin Madsen, who heads that up out there. So anyway, it's a very nice event.
Thank you very much. If I can ask Park and Rec, Steve Brizendine, to say a few words about the mayor's prayer breakfast donation and to the, about the curling.
Mary Annish, members of the council, Mary Annish's prayer breakfast this year typically has some excess revenues over expenditures, and they have chosen to benefit the Community Ed and Rec programs this year with those resources. Those resources will go to needy children that each and every year we scholarship so many participants, I would say, in the neighborhood of one hundred and fifty to two hundred participants on an annual basis into programming that they cannot afford. And Mary Annish's committee has named Community Ed and Rec and that scholarship fund as the benefactors of any excess revenues this year. So I'd like to thank the mayor and his committee for thinking of Community Ed and Rec and the young people of this community that can't afford all the programming that we offer through our programs, and it does assist a number of kids on an annual basis. So thank you for that, Mary Annish. And as far as the curling club, obviously, you know, the curling club is, it's a standalone affiliate. So, Mr. Dacken, thank you for thanking myself, but the reality of it is, it's the curling club. What Kevin Madsen's role in it off the get-go was, he listened to them and invited them into his office to talk about using ice for curling, and Kevin was adamantly opposed to it to begin with, if I could be as bold as to speak for Kevin. But Kevin, over the past eight years of that club, has, has come to not only enjoy the company of those people, but he's become an avid curler himself, and as many of you know, he's a leading authority in the state on arena ice authority in the state on arena ice and has worked at some national events as well. So I think it's been a strong relationship that started with Troy Gorn's coming into our office and pleading for us to give them some ice time to try curling, and lo and behold, eight years later, they're 100 and some odd members strong. They just held that mixed national curling tournament. That was a huge success. And I think as much as Kevin and I enjoy getting some of the accolades for the work that was done for that, the reality of it was, it was the curling club, and we as a city have and should thank them again for the efforts that they did in securing that event, but even more so for our benefit as city government and the facility of the civic center, the work that they did on behalf of the city in essence, because we will reap the benefits of the work that they did in finishing that facility. There was a lot of unfinished products, projects, when we inherited that facility a number of years ago from the Blue Line Club, and the impetus of this national tournament motivated those folks to assist us in getting that done. So the Blue Line Center of the curling, or the civic center, is where the curling takes place, and the rehab that they did and the finish work that they did is going to benefit the city of Wilmer for years to come, and I can't thank the members of that club enough for the work that they did and their leadership behind Troy Gorn's and Matt Pearl and too many to name, but it was an excellent event, and I echo your thoughts, Jim, that the curling club has done a wonderful thing, and that banquet that they hold annually to celebrate their year's success is a very good event as well.
Thank you, Steve, for the kind words. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilman?
One other item, if I may. I know that the school board has been using iPads now for a while, and I wonder if it wouldn't be prudent for staff or the administrator to talk to some of the board members and see how it's working for them, and then maybe have them come to committing and explain the pros and cons, and I think we need to move forward on it with all the paperwork we can get rid of here. I would request that, if possible.
We can certainly look at that, Councilmember Christensen. It is not just the iPads, though. In my experience, they have implemented electronic agendas before in other organizations. It requires some software as well on the front end and the expense of that, and it is something that we are looking at and will be evaluating. We have a few other technology projects, such as the phone system, that are a little bit ahead of that, though.
But in the meantime, you could ask some board members.
And we will, we will get that information from them, but there are a number of cities that have gone to electronic agendas, and there's different software out there, and I have implemented in the past, but it, there's a few steps to it, but we will get there.
Thank you. I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Discussion? We are adjourned.